Good afternoon and welcome. At this time, I'll call to order the joint meeting of our City Council and City School Board. I appreciate the school board accepting our invitation to participate this afternoon. I'd like to take a moment to introduce the council members present today, and after doing so, we'd like to have school board chair Tyron Riddick introduce the members of his board who are also here with us. At this time, from your right, my left, have Vice Mayor Ward, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Williams, Councilman Rector, we'll just go around this way, Councilperson Brother Barlow, Councilman Bennett, and Councilman Fawcett. Chairman Riddick?
Good evening, everyone.
Push your button, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce my colleagues of the Suffolk City School Board, starting to my immediate right is our Vice Chairman Heather Howell, representing the Cypress, not Cypress, Holy Neck Borough, Sleeper Hole, is all running together today. Then we have Ms. Karen Jenkins, representing the Nassman Borough, I meant the Cypress Borough. Then we have Ms. Kim Slinglove, representing the Checkertuck Borough. To my immediate left, we have Dr. Judith Brooks Buck, representing the Nassman Borough. Then we have Dr. Domarie Brittingham, representing the Holy Neck Borough. And Ms. Barham, unfortunately, is unable to be here with us today, but she is representing the Wellaville Borough.
Okay, thank you Chairman Riddick. Our meeting today will focus on the capital improvement plan as it applies to the school system and other related items. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the city manager and our superintendent.
Mayor, Chairman, members of the school board, members of City Council, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you all hear me? Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, I thought you couldn't hear me there for a minute. As the mayor said, today's focus will be on the CIP or FY 2433 Capital Improvement Plan, which we're in the midst of right now. And of course, a part of that, a key part of that is the school projects that we have to talk about. And one in particular, of course, is JFK renovation or replacement, excuse me, project. With that, we have a presentation, which is also in your package that's laid before you at the dais, along with cost estimates on JFK. And what we're going to do here, we have a presentation that we'll walk through to try to outline our process, where we've been, where we're headed, and talk about JFK as it is as a project. The superintendent and I have had many discussions, both on the capital plan and on the project itself. Also with us today, we have representatives from RRMM, the architects, Jeff Harris is with us. And also from our financial advisors, Kyle Lox from Davenport is with us, in case there's any questions in that arena. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Definitely want to thank members of the superintendent's cabinet for also being here today, and really appreciate both the school board and city council coming together today on February 1st in order to make this discussion happen, so that we can have a potential plan moving forward, not only for the funding of John F. Kennedy Middle School, but also for our CIP. At this time, one of the first agenda items that Mr. Moore and I had agreed to be presented today, or actually represented today, is the SPS School Board's Capital Improvement Plan. I'm going to ask Mr. Terry Napier, Director of Facilities, Maintenance and Planning, to come to the podium to review the school board's capital improvement plan that was voted on in December and submitted to the city for review. Mr. Napier?
There we go. Chairman Riddick, Mayor Doeman, members of the council, members of the board, good afternoon to everybody. I am going to do a quick run-through of the school board's approved CIP. I do see where you have that up there in your packet. I'm also going to refer to the school board's document, which is similar, if not the same order. So, beginning with the school board's projects, there are 11 of them that are listed in the CIP. In their form that they submitted, they are presented in priority order from 1 through 7. We're going to focus mainly on the first five years, beginning with on the board's sheet, major system repairs and replacement hazardous materials. Now, prior funding for that was 3.5 million. As you can see on both documents, the funds for the next four budget cycles have been transferred, it's my understanding, to the Northern Shores Elementary School addition project, so you won't see anything in those blocks for the school board's submission. In 2007, 2027, 2028, the request does jump back up to 7 million, and those are to handle HVAC roof systems, stormwater drain repairs, infrastructure issues of that nature. Second on their list at Priority 1A, the operations facility out at the old Mount Zion location, the board has requested in 2324, 209.2 million, sorry, I'm having trouble seeing this, in 2425, 5.5 million, for a total of 14.7 million. Following that is the John F. Kennedy Middle School Project, which is, design is underway at this point, fiscal year 2324, 25 million, 2425, also 25 million. Moving down, priority number, those were actually Priority 1A, and Kennedy was Priority 1. Priority 2 is the Northern Shores Elementary School Edition at 32,400 square feet. The request from the board was fiscal year 2324, 4.7 million, 2425, 5.3, 2526, 5.2 million. Moving down to project number 3 in priority order, the College and Career Academy at Pruden, 2.4 million in 2324. Priority number 4, Forest Glen Middle School Replacement, moving over to fiscal year 2526, 12.5 was the request, 2627, 31.8, and 2728, 18.2. Priority number 5, Elephant's Fork Elementary School, in fiscal year 2627, 21 million, 2728, 15.5, 2829, 13.3 million on that project. And that's the first five projects that actually come in the next five years. The outlying projects in years 5 through 10, I know they're just placeholders at this point, but that includes Elephant's Fork Elementary School, John Yates Middle School Replacements, Kilby Shores Elementary School Replacement, Nassman Parkway Elementary School, and a Nassman River High School Edition. Those all total 441.9 million over the course of the next 10 years. I think that roughly lines up with what you have listed in your packet. The order is a little bit different, but that is what the board has approved and has submitted at this point in time. Are there any questions about any of that? Thank you very much.
With that, Mayor, at this time, the Director of Finance is going to walk us through what our process is, our funding capacity, and where we are at this time. And also, we'll talk about, a little bit about the literary fund opportunities that we have coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school board and the city council. My name is Tealyn Hanson. I'm the Director of Finance for the city, and we are currently in the process of the CIP, but I wanted to take an opportunity this afternoon to kind of just give you an overview of what the city's CIP process looks like, where we are at it, and then kind of where we've landed in the proposed CIP as it sits right now. So, to start with, this slide here, here, excuse me, shows our process. Starting in about mid to late fall, we start receiving all of the requests from our various department heads, our various agencies, including the city, the schools' requests. In October, the city manager and the staff review all those requests. We go over them. We meet with all of the department heads and the agency representatives. We go over those requests, and we learn what those requests entail. We hold those meetings, and then from that, we prepare the city manager's proposed CIP. In November, we take that proposed CIP, and we present it to a subcommittee. That subcommittee consists of the mayor and the vice mayor, and two members of our planning commission, where they will get the first look at what the city manager is proposing from the CIP. They will have an opportunity to comment on it, look at it, make recommendations. Then in December, we start going public with the CIP as it's proposed. In December, at the planning commission meeting, we will, I will do a lengthy presentation going over all of the projects in the first five years of the CIP, what it's proposed. Give planning commission about a month to look at it, to mull it over, and then at their January meeting, they make recommendations and adopt this, or they, they vote to approve the CIP and move it forward to city council. That's where we are right now. Planning Commission has voted to move the CIP forward to city council at their meeting about two weeks ago. So, at city council's next meeting on February 15th, is when we will present the city, the entirety of the CIP to the city council. At that point in time, we also set a public hearing for the CIP, which is to take place this year on the first meeting in March, which I believe is March 1st. And we asked city council to set that public hearing, and then at the meeting in March, they get another overview of the CIP. We hold a public hearing, and that is city council's opportunity to adopt that CIP. Once that CIP is approved, we start working on what's called the capital budget. So, the CIP, as I, as anyone who has had the misfortune or fortune to listen to me give the presentations before, I continually remind those who are listening that the CIP is a plan, it is not a budget. And so, it is a planning document that is updated through this process on an annual basis. We continually look at priorities. We continually look at what the needs of the city are, what the needs of the projects are, and we continually update that plan. It's a 10-year plan with a focus on the first five years. It does not become a budget until you're looking at year 1 of the CIP. Once the CIP is approved, and we're hoping that that happens at the first meeting in March, once that CIP is approved, then year 1 of the plan, and year 1 only, becomes part of the proposed capital improvements budget that we present to the CIP, to the city council, excuse me, starting in May or April, when we present the operating and capital budget to a city council. So, with that being said, I'm going to show you what the CIP looks like as it stands right, as it is proposed and recommended by the planning commission. This screen here is part of my usual CIP presentation. The next few actually are. So, this is all of the, this is the first five years of the CIP for all of the city funds, for all of the projects. And you can see here, I can't put the whole tenure on here, it gets quite lengthy, but the first five years of the CIP is currently proposed at $381.9 million. That encompasses all of the projects for all of the funds. You can see there, we've got projects in the Public Utilities Fund, we've got projects in the Fleet Fund, we've got projects in the Stormwater Fund, projects in our Transit Fund. Information Technology doesn't currently show any projects, expenditures planned, but there are some projects with some existing funding, funding that are planned. And then our General Government Fund. And the General Government Fund is the one that we're focusing on today, because the General Government Fund is the catch-all fund, for lack of a better term, where we do, where the schools' projects are included, as well as transportation, public safety, our public buildings, our village and neighborhoods, and our park and recreation projects are all under the catch-all of general government funds. So, you can see there, for the first five years, we are proposing a total investment in projects of just a little bit over $270.6 million, with the first year being $92.2 million. You'll see there, at the bottom, there's a, kind of an addendum to the chart that shows our bonding capacity, as well as where we are landing on that bonding capacity for the first five years. Based on affordability, as well as capacity issues, we aim for issuing about $30 million a year. This has been a very well-received policy by the rating agencies, which is why the city is so highly rated, and we get such good rates on our debt issuances. You can see there that with this proposed CIP, we are meeting that capacity in all but the second year, and we're really close to it in the second year. This next slide, some of those numbers I rattled off at you, and I'll remind you of them. This next slide shows that entire $270 million of governmental fund projects, broken down by category. So, you can see that transportation takes up 43% of those projects, schools is 24%, public safety is 11%, Parks and Rec at 9%, public buildings and facilities at 8%, and village and neighborhoods at 5%. I wanted to show you this pie chart, because this is the entirety of that $270 million worth of projects in the first five years, with all of the funding, various funding sources that we use to fund the CIP projects. The next slide I show you is going to change those percentages, and I will explain why when we get to it. But before we get to that, I want to just take a minute and talk about some of the priorities when we're developing the CIP. This year specifically, especially with the, in light of the world that we live in, of course JFK was a major priority for the city in putting that into the CIP. The other types of things that we have to look at, at priorities throughout the city, as well as projects that we have started, and with inflation the way that it is, and supply chain issues the way that it is, we needed to make sure we also included funding to finish projects that the city, or the city has already started. In addition to that, and this leads into the next slide, we had to make sure that where we needed local funds to match grant dollars, we were able to fit those into the CIP as well. We have a significant, if you'll, if you'll remember back to the previous slide, we have $92 million worth of projects in the first year. By and large, most of those are transportation projects. That's why you see this transportation piece of the pie so large here. Transportation, we do very well on a state and federal level receiving funding for transportation. But there are local match requirements to a lot of those grant dollars that we receive. So, in order to leverage getting a grant from the federal agency, or from state agencies, in order to spend somebody else's money to get a very needed project done, we have to make sure that we account for and plan for the required matches of local funding. That leads into this next pie chart, where you can see that the percentages have shifted. This removes about $77 million of state and federal grant funding out of the CIP, and just shows you what those general government projects are that are funded with what we consider local funding. So, this is bond issuances, this is cash matches, this is cash from our general fund. So, when we, when we take those state and federal grant dollars out of the pie, you can see that schools now takes up 34% of our projects. Transportation drops from 43% to 24%. Public safety at 15, Parks and Rec at 11, public buildings and facilities at 10, and village and neighborhoods at 7. This illustrates that, that point that I'm making about leveraging some of our local dollars in order to really get some needed projects done on the, predominantly on the transportation side. This pie chart is one last chart. This is back to that $270 million number over the first five years. And so, what this does is show what we anticipate the funding sources for those projects to be. So, we anticipate funding 54%, of the total project costs with bond issuances, state, federal, and other sources, just a hair under 30%, and, and general fund cash at 17%. What that 17% represents is we are planning on putting $46.4 million of general fund cash into the CIP over the first five years. By policy, we are required to put 3% of the general fund budget into the CIP on an annual basis. That equates to about six and a half, somewhere between six and a half to eight million dollars, depending on where we think the operating budget's going to go in the next five years. But we are putting an additional $11.3 million worth of reserves into the CIP, or planning on putting an additional $11.3 million into the, into the CIP out of our reserves, in order to get these projects moving. With all that being said, this is what we are proposing as it relates to the public schools. So, we have there, our, this looks very similar to the chart that was up that Mr. Napier was talking about. There's one additional column in there with the previous funding, so you can see where we have put previous funding on projects. And so, we have JFK Middle, we have previously funded in the CIP, seven and a half million dollars. And then we have planned funding of 22 million in the first year, 20,500,000 in the second year, and 3 million in the third year, for a total, the total there is 45.5, but it does not include the seven and a half of previous funding. So, we're at 53 million total for the, for the JFK Middle School Replacement. The other project that you'll see here, we've got Northern Shores Elementary Edition, and we've got some funding planned out over the first four years in order to accomplish that project. And then in year 5, we add funding back into the school's major systems repairs and replacement. With that, as I talked earlier, what the next steps are on the CIP process, on February 15th, the entirety of the CIP gets presented to the city council, and on March 1st, we will hold the public hearing and adopt, and ask for adoption by city council of the CIP. Excuse me. The next slide, and the next topic I want to cover with you is a literary loan application. So, the state... So the state has opened up an opportunity for us to jointly apply for a state literary loan to fund the first year of the JFK replacement project. What I want to stress on this is this is not in addition to the bonds we were planning on issuing, rather in place of the bonds we were planning on issuing. So we are in the middle of that application process. We are going to apply for up to $25 million in loan proceeds. As I've told the city, as I've told the city manager on a new number of occasions, we could get zero, we could get 25 million, we could get somewhere in the middle. We don't know until we apply for it and we see what the state says. So the state deadline to apply for that is February 10th, which is next Friday, a week from this coming Friday. Both the city council and the school board need to adopt resolutions that support the application. And so for city council, you have on your agenda tonight at your regular meeting, a resolution to, a resolution to allow us to go ahead and submit an application for this funding. To the school board members, I believe that's on your, your agenda for the 9th of February. And then we'll turn that around real quick and get the application in on the 10th before, on the due date. With that, I am happy to answer now any questions that you have, or wait until the end of the presentations and answer any questions, as the next item is the school estimates for JFK, and that's not my area of expertise.
Okay. I think we'll wait to the end, and then we'll have a question, period. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Chairman, members of the board and council. And on the next slide here, what we have is, of course, the recent, most recent estimate for JFK. This is, of course, prepared by RRM Architects. And again, we have a representative of that firm here with us tonight. But on the slide, I took from their submitted, I think it was dated November 9th, estimate, which is also in your package, the top three elements. And of course, what we have here is the school, 125,000 square feet, estimated at $400 per square foot, coming into $50,200. The CSAP program or facility, which the program, as my understanding, is at JFK today. And they have proposed or requested a 12,400 square foot facility. In addition, the data center that I believe is at JFK today, they requested a new standalone facility at 8,500 square foot. And of course, they have demolition. With that said, the total construction dollars now, just for that piece, is $59,010,000. Now, then, the construction contingency was added at 3% in soft costs, which I believe includes engineering's permits, technologies, FFNEs, at another 11. That was escalated from $20, $22 by 5%, and now the number is $74,768,808. Now, again, we have, as you just saw in the capital plan, and in previous funding, $53 million set aside on what we could do. So that said, we have a $21 million discussion point. With that, Andy, can you advance the slide for me, please? There's several discussion points that we can have a talk about as we move through these elements. And of course, the superintendent and I have discussed the human resource building across the street that was identified as a potential home for the school administration. We currently have $6.5 million, 300,000 of that's encumbered, and then we have another $3.5 million in FY, I think it's 27. That leaves $9.7 million there that we may want to take a look at and reallocate to make up that $21 million. We also have an opportunity for a state grant, construction grant for schools. Now, again, this is a competitive grant, and we would be competing against probably some communities that are probably not AAA bonded, or are not as strong economically as Suffolk is. So it's all depends, again, who applies, what they're asking for, how much there is. But it could be up to 20% of a school project cost if, if we were fortunate. And again, we take a look at the square footage of JFK as proposed, as to, I believe it's a copy and cherry, if I'm correct, Superintendent, at 125,000 square foot project. Of course Cherry has a larger population than JFK does today. JFK has, as of December, I think, 541 students. Cherry had 700 and some, if I'm correct. So we may want to take a look at size, you know, is this the right size of that? Two things going to impact your construction costs, size and cost per foot. I mean, it's the equation. So that is something that we probably want to discuss. It is sized right now for 800 students. The CSAP facility and data center, of course, that's part of it currently at JFK, that's two standalone facilities that's being requested. Superintendent or his staff laid out to you on your, at the dais, certain articles on construction cost and looking forward. You know, is the construction environment going to improve? Is it not? These articles tend to think that we're still looking at a year of question marks. I don't think it can be any, supply chain wise, any worse than it has in the past if it doesn't improve. So I think what we're seeing some, in my opinion, is contractors covering some risks in the supply chain we've seen in the past few months. Also, what I'm saying here on the last bullet is to, on the FY '24, 2033 CIP project adjustments, I would say we're under design right now. And we're heading in design, just signed contracts, I believe, if I'm correct, Superintendent. We have some time here, going into another year of CIP, to understand where we are as it relates to that $21 million. We have a cost estimate, and I probably want to maybe have Jeff talk to it a little bit more in detail, but at this early stage, you are flying at a higher elevation than as you will be in a later stage when you're looking at your cost estimates. We still have some unknowns, we have contingencies in this project.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And as a, piggyback on the discussion points that Mr. Moore explained to both the council and to the board, I want to go onto a little bit further detail about the literary loan application and that 20% project cost. And as Mr. Moore explained, that is going to be based on the actual economic levels of schools and school divisions. There are 132 school divisions in the state. We are expecting 100 school divisions to apply for this loan. And once that loan application is completed, there is no timetable given from the state on when money potentially will be allocated. So it could be next year, it could be three years, it could be five years. And as both, as Mr. Moore explained, we don't know the total amount that potentially Suffolk will be able to obtain, but they are going to do the poorer localities and poorer school divisions first. That's written. The second piece, I wanted to be able to provide some figures because we know that there has been some discussion about CSAP itself. Currently, we really range between 43 to 50 kids at CSAP. And CSAP is part of the partnership that we have with seven of the school divisions. But our facility at John F. Kennedy also serves the localities that are to the west of us, Southampton, Franklin, et cetera. If we are looking at our students, there are four to five different programs, depending on the types of kids that you have there. But a student that is in the re-ed program, the cost per pupil to educate those students is $50,000 per year. And the ASP program is $46,000 per year. And the REACH program is also $50K per year. And just the alternative education program itself for each student is $17,601 per year. And the trade special education program would be $20,584. So doing the math there with a, an rough estimate of 45 kids at 20,000, we're talking about $900 to a million dollars per year, something that we would have to pay. So the discussions that we had taken a look at, and that doesn't include transportation, that doesn't include personnel, anything else, because we have to be able to educate those students that are Suffolk students. And these students cannot function well and properly in our regular education classrooms, nor our regular education schools. As it comes to the data center, because we originally had discussions, the city manager and his team, about potentially moving the data center to the HR building, but we run into a lot of issues there, mainly because of the fiber optic cables. Right now, if we were to move any of our fiber optic cables, it would be 60K to 80K per mile. And that's if everything is done correctly. And then you also will have additional fees when it comes to the railroad tracks. And then potentially a break in service for our customers and citizens and constituents in the city. That's something that we really do not want to be able to deal with. That could be a multi-million dollar project, that is, again, if everything goes well. So it's actually more cost-effective for us to be able to keep the data center and the CSAP center in their current locations. And ladies and gentlemen, that is the main difference from the construction of Colonel Fred Cherry. You have two other existing entities that are already at that building. And those, John F. Kennedy was chosen because they are central locations for the city, as well as also as an easier and quicker way for our school divisions that partner with CSAP to the west of us to be able to come to Suffolk. So as we're looking at some of the things, as you see the reallocation of the human resources building, design is underway for that, design is also underway for JFK. We know, since we, the school board and I have always said about keeping kids first. So if that's a necessary thing that we may do, that will be something that the school board and I will talk about, because we know that there are certain limitations that the city will be able to do when it comes to funding all of these projects. But the $7.5 million that we originally had for this fiscal year for John F. Kennedy also included construction at the end of the fiscal year. That is for our timeline of hopefully being able to move those students into JFK at some point in time in the 2025, 2026 school year. Every month that we delay is a month of challenges for supply chains, as well as the probable inflation costs that we could see. So I want to be able to add that to your thought process as we begin discussion on the overall CIP for the school division, as well as John F. Kennedy Middle School specifically. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
One thing real quickly, as we talk about the state programs, there's a loan program, which the resolutions before you tonight and on your next meeting, school board. And then there's a grant program. What I was referring to was the grant program, which hasn't come out yet. The loan program is out there, and again, both aren't competitive, but they're too distinct, I just didn't want to get a confusion. We use the term loan and grant interchangeably there for a minute. One's a loan, one's a grant program. So I wanted to just clarify that. But with that, again, as we look if, where we are on the estimate and what we have in the CIP, there's a gap, and we need to close that gap. If the numbers, if the costs stay where they are.
Okay, thank you very much. I was trying to, my little head come up with a process of how we could ensure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. We did extend the time of our meeting to roughly two hours, but even with Ms. Byram gone, I think that leaves 14 of us to comment. So what we're going to do is go around the room and allocate everyone up to five minutes. If everybody took their five minutes, that would be an hour and 10 minutes. But just to provide initial comments, initial concerns, or initial thoughts, we will get back, not so much have a discussion back and forth, because we don't want to get on one topic or, or one individual speak for 15 minutes. So just your first impressions, your thoughts, your concerns, and we'll go all the way around without any reply, come all the way back around. And then when that's completed, then I will look back to the manager and the superintendent, so they could basically speak in rebuttal if you want. Or if three people have this concern, and it's a city concern, then the manager would address it, then the superintendent would address it. And then from there, I'll just ask for individuals to raise their hand if they'd like to ask specific questions, to have some type of back and forth, depending on how much time we have. So with that being said, I'm going to start with Chairman Riddick and work our way around
It is imperative that we move forward with proposed solutions and not get stuck in the traction of the shortfall. We realize that's the elephant in the room, but I want us to focus on finding a solution. It would be unwise, in my opinion, to reduce the capacity of John F. Kennedy Middle School below 800 when we look at our pipeline development for our city. Our city is rapidly increasing. When you look at Kingsfork Middle School, Kingsfork Middle School is almost over its capacity. And we still have new pipeline development in the school zone for Kingsfork Middle School. If we reduce John F. Kennedy capacity, we will be coming back to you with the same issues that we don't have enough space. We need a school compatible, not compatible, equal to the quality of schools that we have built in the northern internet with Colonel Fred Cherry. If that school is at 800 capacity, we need a school, in my opinion, I would say a bigger size, but I would settle for 800. Because you know more than I that our city is rapidly growing, and we have to be ready for the growth. Also, I would like to piggyback off of what Dr. Gordon did state. We're looking at, if we relocate CSAP, that's a reoccurring budget item that we would have to then figure out where will we get that million minimum from. It could easily go up to three or four million a year. So these are challenges that are beyond our control, but because we house CSAP, that's an, it's a savings for our division. And I don't know if you all are current with what's going on in the education world right now. The Department of Education released a budget that had an error in it. So it's a possibility, well, no, it's a fact, we're going to lose some funds from the state. We don't want to put any more stress on a already stressed system. We need to really make this school happen if we can use the parfa dollars to build JFK, or maybe if we could just extend the, out into another fiscal year to get it done. But we cannot move forward with a reduced, a reduction in size that's moot. We could not moot point. We could not move forward with relocating the data center, because what it will also do is, from my understanding, that the surrounding communities, Lake Kennedy, your constituents, will also lose internet service while this stuff is going on. So these are just some things that have been stated. I wanted to expound upon it and express that we find solutions. I know we're writing the grant. We don't, we're not a tax-based body. We don't have the ability to tax. And I'm not asking you to raise taxes, but what I am asking, if we could possibly extend out the funding to encompass and cover the cost that we need, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board member, Hal, if you just hit your speak button, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Doeman. I just echo what Chairman Riddick said. We can't keep kicking the can down the street with JFK. And, I mean, looking at the discussion points here, obviously reducing the size, I support him in that, that shouldn't be an option. We have seen a trend in, in building schools for what fits in the moment and not for what's to come. And I think we save ourselves some trouble, some headache, and some funds down the road when we match our school plans for the city growth plan, so that we can keep up. when we match our school plans for the city growth plan, so that we can keep up with I don't have the solution either, but I'm happy to sit here and hash it out with you all. I just know to reduce the size or remove CSEP and the data center are, to me, they're not, from an education standpoint, they're not options because of the cost that the education system incurs if we go that route.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you for everybody being here this evening. I just want to touch on a very couple of things that have already been said, going back, looking at the discussion points. I want to reel back to a few years back when we started to talk about a middle school and an elementary school in the city of Suffolk. I was distinctly approached by the school board members at the time, was Mr. Midnick and Dr. Bransky. The issue was, we need two schools, not one school, because there was a discussion at the time to do one schools, and then we rolled up and we figured out how to get to two schools. And then the discussion, they came to my office and sat down and said, "Look, they were gonna build Fred Cherry as a six hundred foot, six hundred seat school." And I said, "Okay, so what's the plan?" They said, "Well, we prefer to have an eight hundred seat school." I said, "I prefer to have a thousand seat school," because I knew back then that the growth is gonna outrun eight hundred seats. But because of cost, trying to get two schools in the program, I said I would support an eight hundred seat school, but for Florence Bowser, I would not support anything less than a thousand, because that's areas building up out there rapidly. So with that being said, I'm just not going to be in a position to support a reduction in seat per school. I would stay very much to an eight hundred seat school. I'll go back and I'll tell you right up front that I really like thousand seat schools, but are we realistically gonna get there? We are already facing a twenty-three million dollar shortfall for this JFK. We are not gonna sit here tonight and figure out how we're gonna do that. I can tell you that right now. We're not going to. It's gotta be addressed and talked about. I would probably agree with Mr. Riddick, that I probably wouldn't have any objections of taking, pushing it down in the CIP if those dollars could find a way to match, but that's an extraordinary, we didn't plan for a seventy-something thousand, seventy-three million dollar school or seventy-four million dollar school. It was never planned for that. It was always planned back in the day when we started out. If you look at our CIP, how we came in each year, that's what we were asked for at the time, and that's where we went. So now we're at a crossroads here, where we're talking fifty-three million plus to seventy-three to seventy-four million plus. And understandably, that number's not gonna hold. That number will not hold in today's cost range society we're in. Supply chain or not, that will not hold. There's never been a price put on something that's been stable throughout the whole process. So that's kind of where I'm at on the seat thing. I have some issues with a couple of other things, and I'll wait and come back around. But I just want to address that, since that's simply the topic about seats. That's where I'm at today. How we get to it, you know, when you're looking at four hundred dollars per square foot, that's a pretty heavy price tag. I mean, I don't want to build the Taj Mahal here. I want to build a learning center that we can get into, get kids educated, and get the job done. Any cut, fluff, or anything else that's in this process need to be gutted out and fixed, so that we're not putting money in a hole that we don't need to put it in. We need to put it strictly, if we're gonna do this, to the educational process. I'll have some other comments, but thank you.
Board member Jenkins.
I agree with most of the comments that my colleagues and everyone has said thus far, but one thing I want to say to start out with is that we are a board, I hope, and we are a, we have a city council that, again, will not just focus on these meetings to bring the problems. We want to have some solutions, and if we keep doing this, because as we go forward, every time we come, the price is gonna be up. So we're gonna be at the same position each time we meet, whenever we meet. So we have to do some planning in between. We cannot continue to base our beginning on the fifty-three million, that's out the window. It's gonna, and like you just said, Councilman Fawcett, the number that we have now, next month could be out the window. So we have to be strategic in trying to find a solution, or we will never have a new JFK. This is where it's going. We've been waiting and waiting, and now the prices have gone up, we're saying we don't have the money. Just like yesterday in the general assembly, it was just, "Oh, we made a mistake. We lost two hundred and one million dollars." Okay, so what's the plan? We have to have a plan, and just coming, sitting here, talking about the problem is not solving the plan, the problem. So we have, we need to build a brand-new JFK. Everyone agrees with that. They have water coming out of the locker room, the lockers, all these different things. And I know people may say, "We get tired of hearing it." Well, it's still the problem. So we have, we have to do something for our kids, because that's the reason why we're here on the school board, to help our kids, make sure that they're in a facility where they can learn, where they can be safe, where the teachers have the same ability to teach with the new technology, just like our other schools and our other cities are doing the same. So I'm just here, and I know my colleagues are here, we want to come up with a solution so we can all walk in and cut that ribbon for our new JFK. Whatever we have to do, let's just sit down, get to the nitty-gritty, and let's do it.
Councilman Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'll be very brief. I don't need five minutes to say what I'm gonna say, because a lot of it had already been said. I totally agree that we need to move forward with JFK school. My concern, if you push it out some, the price, the cost is gonna continue to increase. So what we are talking about today, if you push it out another year or two years, whatever, it's gonna cost more. So I have some concerns with the extension of the, during the construction. Size of the school, I think we should look at the future, not just what we need today, but we need to look to the future of what we're gonna need four, five, ten years from there, instead of, like Colonel Cherry, just a new, brand-new school, and it's overpriced already, because we didn't put the extra seats there that was needed to be done when we was doing the construction. So I strongly support the eight hundred students, if you can do it more, but a thousand, and that's looking to the future, but I know a thousand's a big number, but eight hundred's better than a thousand. So I can support that, and I would hope that we can move forward with JFK school and some of the other things that was talked about, the CSEP program, that's one I know that we have to really be concentrating on, because we have a lot of kids now that needs that, that type of teaching. So I think we need to consider supporting that as much as we can, because every time I see a kid just getting in trouble, then I think we need to have some to try to help those kids and keep them out of trouble. So I strongly support what you are asking for here. Thank you.
Board member Slingliff.
Thank you, Mayor Dooman. I, being one of the newest ones to the school board here, I don't have as much wisdom to cast out, but I am strongly in support of not decreasing the size, but acknowledging the need for JFK and to not delay in putting it forward. I think it affects, you know, not only the, you know, supporting the number of students and the size, the size of the schools, but also when you look at the academics and the safety of the school, if we delay, the longer we delay, I think that those items also become greater factors as well. So I'm hopeful that we can come to a solution, and that we can, instead of putting a Band-Aid on this, that we can move forward and find that solution and not delay in the application.
Councilperson Brother-Broiler.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we can all agree that we need a new JFK, and we needed last year, not somewhere down the road. So I don't think there's any argument that the need is there. The school is certainly failing and needs to be replaced. I have a couple of questions, not to, you know, repeat what's already been said, but one of the things that's proposed here is that the CSEP and the data centers be separate freestanding facilities. So they're, they're already at this location, they need to be at this location, and I need someone to make me understand how the cost of doing what ends up being three separate buildings is more cost-effective than having them actually under one roof. And I'm no contractor, engineer, but if we keep those two programs at that facility, but put it all in one building, it seems like that would be a cost-saving. So I'm just throwing that out as a possible, a possible option, and for the architects, if that, if that is even a possibility, because that's the way they're housed currently. So that was one of my, my thoughts, that maybe we have some cost savings by keeping them all under one roof. The other question I had, I know that we're exploring a couple of other funding possibilities. I understand the situation with the state where suddenly we have less money than we thought we had, and we're looking at the grant, excuse me, the potential grant funding, but I would like to explore if there are other funding opportunities that we have that are out there that might fund the latter half of this seventy-four million dollar project. And I'm, you know, don't doubt that there are people investigating that, but it seems like there's a lot of money, state and federal, that we're not tapping, that we potentially could be tapping into, that maybe we could be looking into. And those are, those are the points I wanted to make. Thank you.
Councilman Rector.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Like Ms. Slingliff over there, I'm the new kid on the block, so I don't have the background and the experience that a lot of other people around this dais do. However, having been on the planning commission for sixteen years, I have been involved in the generation of the capital improvements program for a number of years. I don't disagree with, with any of the statements that have been made. Clearly, a new school is indicated. My wife graduated from John F. Kennedy back in the day, so I can assure you that this school does have a little bit of age on it, because I've got a little age on me, and we're approximately the same age. My questions are, and I'm not gonna argue about the eight hundred student capacity, because clearly the consensus around the dais is that that is what is needed, but I'm going back to this cooperative strategies report that was put out. It was dated February third, 2021, and they talked about the 2019, 2020 enrollment at John F. Kennedy Middle School was five fifty-one, and the projected five-year enrollment growth was negative fifty-four, and the projected ten-year enrollment growth was negative fifty-three. I know that since 2021, there haven't been a significant, huge number of new houses that have been put into the pipeline. So I'm hoping that whoever put this together had some knowledge or was made privy to the fact that we do have houses that are in the, in the pipeline. So obviously, if the population of the, of the school is projected, you know, by this study to be reduced over the next ten years, I, you know, at this point, for me, since we're running into this huge cost obstacle, going up to eight hundred or a thousand students, I just question whether or not that is justified, and perhaps somebody that has been around, you know, particularly on the school board level, a lot longer than I have, can explain that difference in those, those numbers to me. The other thing is going back to the literary fund, you know, I'm just curious as to what, and, you know, Ms. Hanson can probably address that when it comes up time for questioning, but she can start working on this now. You know, are the terms for that favorable, considerably more favorable than what they would be with a standard municipal bond? And I'm assuming they would be, or we would not be pursuing it. But, you know, the bottom line is, is somehow or another, we gotta figure out how to get over this impasse, and twenty-three million dollars is not an insignificant figure. You know, money like that just, you know, obviously doesn't fall from trees, and I don't think anybody would be in support of raising the tax rate, since we just dropped it down two cents last year. So I'm open to any and all suggestions, but I would like, you know, if somebody knows a little bit more about this report, if they could address the student population issue for me. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be brief. I don't want to beat a dead horse, as you say, saying the same thing that everybody else had talked about. However, I am in support of the eight hundred student capacity. I don't think we should reduce it. I would like to see this project move forward without delay, but I do understand that we have some problems with the deficit, and we have to find some way to make up that twenty-one million dollars. I'd like to see the city manager and school superintendent and staff work towards coming up with some more avenues of funding, so we can get this project off the ground and complete it. Also, I have a question as it relates to the state construction grant, and my question is, when is the deadline for that, and who's gonna submit the application, whether it's gonna be the city or the school board? So I would like an answer to that question, if possible. And with that, thank you, sir.
Board member Brittenham.
Thank you, Mayor Dooman. I too am a new member to the school board and am trying to wrap my brain around a lot of information here. The one other thing that just strikes me is that JFK has been needed for a very, very long time, like the renovations or the complete new building of it. Without a doubt, the evidence is there that this, this project should have been well underway by now, and it has not been. And so I am, as my previous colleagues have said, I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this project. But there are definitely some very problematic things, you know, one of them being the twenty-one million dollar shortfall. And again, here recently finding out that we have a two hundred and one million dollar shortfall that happened, calculation mistake. So I think at this point, you know, one of the things that we need to, you know, do is, you know, have the city manager and the superintendent look at, have we exhausted research on what funding is out there for grants and loans? Have we, have we done due diligence to see what everything out there is available that may help us make up this shortfall? The other thing is, is that, you know, I, I know that we've got capacity issues coming like a rolling train for the school system. The JFK project is one of many that we need to address. We are gonna be in a place here in the next year or two where we're gonna be over capacity in many of our schools. So, you know, we, we need to definitely move quickly on JFK, get that rolling and getting that taken care of, so that those students can, can have their needs, their needs met, those teachers can teach. But we also need to be looking to the future. We need to build for the future of our students. We need to be thinking and be future-minded and think fiscally and responsibly about how we're gonna do that. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Now, I will be brief. It's kind of nice being at the end, because it's all been said, more or less. School board selected JFK for the next facility to be improved, and there's no question about it, everybody said the same thing, school needs to be replaced. Mr. Rector made a good point with the 500 students that are there now. If we have to cut somewhere, it would seem that, do we build for 20-year capacity or be building for today? That's the question. Funding's not there, so that's something I think we should at least look at. I'm more in favor of the 800 capacity, because I think that's where we're heading as a world, but I'm not sure that if the money's not there, and we're looking for a way to cut, it's something we need to at least consider. Also, will echo what Ms. Barlow said about CSEP and the data center. The same question came to me, I wrote it down really big. Do we need to build new buildings for those facilities, or can we even make do for the time being while we go ahead and get the JFK facility built? Is there any way there that we can, we can play games with it? I don't know. There's so many needs in the school system, I don't want us to forget that this is, needs to be done. I support it 100%, but I also don't want to not recognize that we have major issues with a lot of our elementary schools right now, as far as needs and maintenance needs particularly. And hopefully, we're going to find a way to do that in congruence with this, so that we can maintain all of our school system. And with that being said, I agree with the fact that we need to look for different ways to fund. Maybe we need to think outside of the box for all of this and try to come up with new concepts for funding our schools. Obviously, we're all going to be facing this in the next 10 years, even more so than today. So I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Board Member Brooks Buck.
I think that we've had several of these discussions over the years. I think many of us have been here together for 11 years. Some of you came on council when I came on the board, and we've had these discussions. Your predecessor, Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Skeeter and I began asking about John F. Kennedy years ago. Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Skeeter, and Ms. Byram, and Mr. Copeland and I, all began with discussions about the school that was flooding and water in the school, and the fact that you could put a canoe in the auditorium in John F. Kennedy. When it rained, not when we had a hurricane or a storm, but when it rained, water was coming up out of the floor. So we're accustomed to that, and we know it's an urgent need. When we compare schools in various regions, sometimes it's a false comparison, because when Fred Cherry opened with the 800 capacity, and I remember, because I was in that fight about making it larger, because it does cost more money, we opened with 760 kids, and within a week, we were up to 780 kids of the time that it opened, and our capacity was 800 students. So I understand that. The question becomes, because I thought the same thing with you guys, the question becomes, if we drop it down, what does it cost if we drop the number of students? What does it cost? I asked the superintendent earlier to look into that. What does it cost if we drop it by 50? What does it cost if we drop it by another 50? We have 541 children. We had 18 trailers behind John Yates when I started, when I came on the board, arguing about the need for a new Fred Cherry. So I have no problem with the schools being larger, not at all, but I think we need to look at, and I'm a reasonable person, I know when I go look for things, I look for things. So I had those same thoughts. I'd like for it to be as large as we can possibly make it, because I believe that we can fill it up with programs. We can diversify the population, we can fill it up with programs. If we don't have enough students in that area, we can bring the populations in our other schools down by filling it up with different kinds of programs. That's why I recommended the program, I wanted the program out at Lakeland that we just opened, and I recommended it on another superintendent, and this superintendent took the ball and went running with it, and so we have our new visual and performing arts program. So there are some things that we can do with the space when we have the space, but if we're looking at money and reasonable, and if we can move the programs inside the building, if it's some way to do it inside the building, as that cuts costs, I'm a reasonable person when I ask for things. I spent the weekend with Congress before I came here, asking for money, because I want to say this, and I said this to Mayor Doeman when he first became mayor, and I said to Mayor Johnson before him, we have in our CSEP program, and Dr. Gordon gave you some indication of how much that cost, we are supposed to receive 40% of our cost for special education from the government. That's what they promised us in 1975. Suffolk last year, and that's why I asked for the cost, the extra cost of special education. We get cost for the, we get money for the numbers of students who are enrolled in our school. And so I asked how much this would cost if we got the reimbursement that we were supposed to get. We spent $28 million on special education, separate and above the regular cost that we have for, for all of our programs. We got not 40%, but $3.8 million. I went to ask Congress, why are you not giving us the money that you promised us? I'm a special educator. I believe that all children in America should get a free and appropriate public education. But why are you keeping that money? That would mean $11 million plus for our system this year, and so we wouldn't have to ask for so much if we were getting what we were supposed to get, what we were promised. I don't stop there, and I went to the state and asked them for more money. So it's not that we're not trying to do what we're supposed to do. We ask all over for all the money that we can get, but we're here trying to get what we are supposed to get, or what we can get from the city, because we've asked the federal government, we've asked the state government, and we're here. And I try to be reasonable when I come before you, so it's not that I'm coming before you asking for something, not realizing that we need to be reasonable and logical. If we can, we started at Fred Cherry, because we're building there, and let me get back to the original point. My question would be to the city. Are we going to build any, any homes that are for families in the area where we now have the population that serves John F. Kennedy? Are, are we going to make it public spaces? Are we gonna, what are we going to do there? Because if not, we're going to have to import children in, which is fine, like I said, I'm a program person. I can think of ideas to fill that school for right now. But are we going to do that? We need to know that from the planning people. What do we plan on doing with the space around Kennedy? I don't know. So that's a question that I have. I'd love to have it as large as it can be, and I'd love to fill it with an international baccalaureate program. I'm just putting it out there. I'd like for that to be there. I'd like for visual and performing arts to be there, because those children are fed into King's Fork, where we have an IB program, and Lakeland, where we have our visual and performing arts program. So if we could do that at the middle school level, I think it would be wonderful, and I think I could fill those seats up with children from all over the place, some from private schools, some who are homeschool. All of those might want to come if we had those programs there. And we could use that space that we had to fill up John F. Kennedy. But those are the things that I think we could do if we had that space. So I'm not opposed to that, but I am reasonable when it comes to, let's look at who we have to fill those seats, and let's look at what we can do that's reasonable. I don't expect the city manager or Dr. Gordon to pull money out of the air, because money is where it is. Thank you. Sorry.
Vice Mayor Gordon.
Thank you. Turn your on. There you go. All right. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. Couple of things that hit me, and, and like I said, one was when the school board member said, we meet once, once in a while, we have this project, talking about JFK, and I think everybody on this school, on the council, want the best for JFK. And I, you know, sometime you hear that we don't want this, and we don't want that. That's not true on this council. We understand the situation that JFK is in. That's, that's, that's no, no brainer. The problem is that we, me, when it hit me, 21 million difference. And when I heard that in a meeting, I, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't believe it. Because all I ask, most of the time, is that superintendent and city manager get this done, because it don't look good for both sides. And then when it come out, it's not what you probably think it is, it's different. So what I'm saying is, I was there also when Councilman Fawcett, it came to me, because he was in sleep and hold, and I was in NASM, and I remember that 600. And both of us flew off, there ain't going to be no 600 at school, we had an 800. And he did say a possibility, one a thousand. So we satisfied with 800. Then talking to Dr. Buck, found out we almost overcrowded. I have nothing wrong with JFK being 800, but the problem is, I have, is when are we going to really take care of business? I mean, one, one meeting is not going to solve this problem. I think we should get on some type of schedule. We're going to build a school, like they say or not. This school will be built, but we can't have $20 million or $10 million difference, and we get it all of a sudden. I'm just saying, we know the problem in JFK. What is the problem? Let's try to iron it out. What can we do? Everybody's saying that they would like to have, we can sit down and go out the box. I haven't seen none of that. After we meet today, very soon, we meet any other time. I don't even know what's going on, maybe because y'all had school board meetings, that's fair, but I'm saying, we still not taking care of the situation with the schools. I think I see about one to about six replacements coming on. We got to build some more schools. So now, 74 million going to be, next school, it ain't going to no lower, it's not getting no cheaper. So I'm just saying, so where the president's going to, where it going to stop? Where we going to know? I think we should get more involved in what's going on, we going to build these schools. It's not fair for a councilman to have to see this a big $21 million difference, and we got projects beside the school. We got projects, we got to be pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. We have a budget. Well, I'm just saying, hopefully, can we meet in a time period that we know what's going on, and at least the council know a little bit what's going on? Different entities, I understand that too, but I like what Councilman Rector said. Let's check out with the attendance. What can we do to make the attendance be better? Dr. Buck just said, are we going to invest in the community? Things can be done, but things can not be done. I can't, we can't read minds. What can we do? I want to find, like I said, 21 million, somebody didn't do the job, far as I looked at it. There's no way in the world that we can be that off with our budget. No way in the world. $21 million to hit us and hit me in the face, and then everybody trying to get grants, I understand that. Well, who are controlled the grants? Are we going to work together, try to get the grants, or y'all going to get a grant? We going to know? I mean, I don't understand. The money could be out there, that the people who know how to, the experts, could get money. But 21 million, and maybe it's not as that now, but that was very surprising with me. And I, I just can't deal with it. The most time I say is this, communicate. Let's see how we can get this done, because JFK needs, need to be done. And I don't mean like keep them getting pushed off, pushed off, they right, all that too, I agree with that 100%. We, we noticed it, we seen it. Now when, let's get the job done. Thank you.
Okay. I'll wrap up our initial comment period. I want to thank everyone for their comments. I'll just interject a few thoughts, and then we'll turn it over to the manager to respond, then the superintendent to respond, and obviously then call up whoever they would like to call up to speak to whatever issues that have come up for discussion. And then depending on time, we'll go back around again if anyone has any specific questions they would like to ask that hadn't been answered during their, their time. Dr. Brooks Buck alluded to, this ain't the first time we've done this, and you're exactly right. Won't be the last time we've done this, simply because we do not have the ability to print money, and that's the only thing that's going to fix the school problem, not just in Suffolk, but everywhere. The school problem cannot really be fixed without serious state and federal assistance. We've got old schools, Virginia Beach has 100-year-old schools, Norfolk has 100-year-old school. I mean, they still hadn't done anything with Maury, which is 100 years old, and the ceiling's falling on people. It's a $100 million project, and they can't figure that one out. So it is a problem. It is a problem we need to understand. We have to be pragmatic about the situation. There's only so much money. The city has a lot of needs, our citizens have a lot of needs. I don't think any money is spent that is not spent in a fiscally responsible manner. I know this council really does go through the budget, and we try to get as much as we can out of every dollar. So the only way to raise more money is to either borrow more money or to raise our taxes again. So that's the reality. The discussion today has primarily been around JFK, and I'll speak to that just a little bit. I knew it was brought up about the student, student generation rates, pipelines. I'm going to get back to the study. I got to get back to the study. February 3rd, 2021, we were, we were presented in February with this study that was done by Cooperative Strategies, RR M&M, and we got our M&M people here today. This is a very comprehensive study, it took over a year to put together. It cost $427,956. What was the purpose of this study? It was an independent study that was done to basically do three things. Determine what the student generation rate was going to be, and where it was going to take place, in which part of our city. It was to analyze and rate each one of the school facilities as to their condition, those most in need of being replaced, repaired, or added on to. Each one of them have a, had a FCI rating, I believe it was referred to. JFK's in the top four, they were four in the 30-some percentile. So there's absolutely no question, nobody needs to talk about, we know JFK needs to be replaced, we know there's water, we know all of that. That's not the point. The point is, how do we go about doing it? This study also provided options, options, two or three options to each scenario. How do we handle, how are we going to accommodate this projected student generation in this particular area with what facilities? Now, we've been talking about JFK, but I'm looking at the total CIP that the school system is presenting, and I don't see in that total CIP where any consideration was given to this study. And it's not my opinion, that's what it is. I still see separate elementary schools, I don't see reconsideration of redistricting, I don't see any consideration of consolidation, consolidation and redistricting, which would save in some cases, especially the elementary schools, and I really shouldn't be concerned about it, because I'll be way in the ground before we get around to building any of that stuff. But the reality of it is, this should be a strategic plan, and that strategic plan needs to take into consideration money. You know, money's not everything, but it sure helps. When we look at the elementary schools in particular, not redistricting and not consolidating could be as much as $31 million difference, and that's based on numbers from 21, so based on everything, I'm hearing 31 million, it'll be 131 million by the time we get there. So this needs to be considered moving forward. Let's do the best we can with what we've got. I've got an article that was printed on 11/26/21, David Sturts from Cooperative Strategies, and I quote, "The intent here, just to set this up, is to provide you a data-driven, vision-informed set of options that are practicable, practical, and implementable. It is not a wish list, it's a plan." Do we have a plan, or do we have a wish list? Do we have a plan or do we have a wish list? You start with your wish list and you develop a plan. And that plan needs to be focused around, how much can we get done? For how many dollars? It has to be fiscally responsible. So that's just moving forward. Uh, when we look at what the city has, there's no one on this dais that doesn't support education. There's no one on this dais short of being able to write a check out of their checkbook, does not want to support our schools or understand that we need our facilities. A lot of them repaired, replaced. Um, I don't totally agree with a lot of the prioritization that was done. I mean, when we talk about the student generation, I mean, it's in the book. JFK, according to this, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And I'm not saying I'm okay with eight hundred. But if you wanna do data-driven, the number's four hundred ninety-eight projected for twenty-nine to thirty. That's the number, I didn't make it up, it's in the book. Four hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars worth says projected trend twenty twenty-nine to twenty thirty, four hundred ninety-eight people. Where's the greatest growth? Nazman River High School. Nazman River High School is more over capacity than any other high school. You can't really redistrict because nobody can drive past Nazman River to get the, I mean, you could, but redistrict is really not an option. My personal opinion, I'm not on school board, but I would find some way to come up with some money to get an addition on Nazman River High School. It's like number sixteen on the priority list. It's something we could have knocked out for sixteen million and now it's God knows what. Um, the JFK deal, you know, this is a plan. And the worst thing about a plan is we can't follow the plan. So for us, looking at it from a council and just everyone's been up here with the exception of Councilman Rector, and he's been on a planning commission for a while, doing the preliminary CIP looks. We look at the CIP and we look at the same thing this year, next year, this year, this year. We can, we figure roads, we figure parks, we figure all the myriad of needs that we have within our city. So the twenty twenty, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-eight CIP had JFK in there for forty-three million dollars. Had some other things, had Exile Academy, had Nazman Shores in there for a total of six. JFK the next year went to forty-five point five. The next time it came around, it went to million, to fifty million. Then it went to fifty-two billion and now it's seventy-four million. It's kinda hard to plan. Kinda hard to plan. Twenty million doesn't sound like much, but it's two-thirds of our borrowing capacity. We can't risk a triple A rating by exceeding the borrowing capacity that is being recommended by our finance department and our financial advisors. I've got a little bit of issue, I feel like, and I shouldn't say this, but being in the car business, I feel like there's been a little bit of a bait and switch. And when we started off with fifty million and then we plugged in CSEP, we plugged in the data center. You know, we get demolition for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, obviously it had to come out. And then we've got miscellaneous project soft costs. And I'm not exactly sure what that is, maybe I get somebody to explain it to me, for another eleven million dollars. Well, I would assume that those miscellaneous projected soft costs would have been part of the original fifty million. Or at least there's some soft cost in there. So just throwing it out there. Um, I think there's a way that we can get there. I too want JFK done, uh, as expeditiously as possible with the funds that we have. I implore the school board to follow the data, not the emotion, follow the data moving forward. So we can do the most with the funds, with the limited funds they have, and they will always be limited. For sake of discussion, it all starts with the city manager and the superintendent. The city manager and the superintendent are the two guys to make this happen. It's not our budget, it's the manager's budget when it comes to us. It's not the school board's budget until you receive it from the superintendent. So they have got to communicate honestly and upfront and realistically to come up with suggestions. They don't have to be right on the money, but they need to be in the same zip code. And then what that does is it makes the discussion up there a whole lot easier. Cause all we have to do is start tweaking things. But when we're a mile away, it makes it very difficult. So those are, those are my thoughts and I probably took up my five minutes, but I got to make the rules, so. That's how it goes. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the city manager from here and then we'll wrap it up with some more comments. Unless Dr. Gordon would like to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and city manager Moore. I wanna be able to, um, kinda address some of the questions that, that came up. I know I am gonna call Jeff Harris at, at the end of my comments, um, to provide some feedback. Uh, the mayor's right where the facility study definitely was supposed to be our constitutional bible when it came to building schools. But what none of us could have predicted was the level of inflation. One of the things that we talked about in the facility study was our top three schools that needed to be rebuilt were Forest Glen, John F. Kennedy and Elephants Fork. We have strategically and specifically taken city council to JFK and Elephants Fork. And next year will be Forest Glen, so that you can see it directly. JFK was chosen because it cost more money to maintain that school than five of our schools put together. So we wanted to be clear on even though Forest Glen had some other needs, that the outgoing cost was going to be the, our greatest concern. The mayor's also right when he talked about options that came out of the facility study. And I really appreciate what Mr. Johnson said about looking and thinking outside of the box. But thinking outside of the box also means that we need to take a hard look at increasing our debt threshold. You can't build anything for thirty million dollars anymore. Anything. And if you looked at what Ms. Tealyn had presented, part of the reason why that figure for the schools was selected was to make sure that it actually fit into that debt threshold. And we can understand that. But the inflation that has come from school construction is astronomical. This is part of the reason why I asked Mr. Harris to provide you all with that information in the package that was given to you to show that the average square footage right now for schools that are currently being built is actually four hundred and thirty-four dollars per square foot. Which is part of the reason why we're having the conversation about four hundred dollars per square feet. Mr. Johnson had asked, could we potentially keep CSEP and the data center where they are as we build the new JFK? The new JFK is not going in the exact location, it's actually going behind the current building. And so the exact location of where CSEP and the data center are will be your athletic fields and parking lot. So that won't be able to happen. Uh, Ms. Butler Barlow had asked a question on, and Mr. Rector had also piggybacked on that, about, uh, it being separate facilities. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Harris to come up in a, in a short moment. But one of the things I need you all to understand is that our students that are in CSEP have severe disabilities. Severe. And many times when these students are having a bad day in our current setup, this means the entire building of JFK must go on lockdown. The current building of CSEP is attached to JFK through a breezeway. But because it's still part of our architectural structure, the entire school must go on lockdown. So one student that's having a bad day affects five hundred and fifty kids and the remainder of the building. That is part of the reason why we asked for a separate facility for that. We also wanted to make sure that the separate facility was gonna occur for the data center because of our customer service needs. With our SPS connect, parents coming to get devices, et cetera. We didn't wanna interfere and just interrupt normal operating hours and clerical staff at JFK by state happening, coming around to a different entrance for the data center. That is something that, uh, Mr. Littlefield, Mr. Harris, our entire team had talked about. I agree with what you said, Mr. Ward, about communication between the superintendent and the city manager. We talk bi-weekly. This twenty-one million dollar threshold has been known about for months. And it's a situation where we have tried to be able to share information, uh, with the city's team and come up with some other options. But I also agree with what Mr. Fawcett said and Mr. Riddick said about every month, and Ms. Howell said it too, that we wait, it's gonna increase. So the project has increased actually some if we were to open it up today. One of the things that Mr. Riddick had brought up was taking a look at, uh, extending the project. That doesn't mean pushing the project back. It means adding an additional fiscal year in order to give the city more flexibility to get it done. That is something that the city manager and I are currently discussing right now. I also wanna be clear when we were talking about the COAT tool area that was occurring at the state level. That is for operating fund money, not CIP. These are two separate funds. We have to make sure as we're continuing to do this because the facility study was the beginning of what needed to happen. But because of the longevity of many of you all that have been on council and on the school board, we know that several projects that the school has asked for have taken years to get done. The human resources building has been discussed for fourteen years. JFK has been discussed for ten years. So we're now to the point where we finally have a plan together. And as I said again earlier, that the end of this fiscal year here, we're supposed to be seven point five million of design plus construction. That's something we need to really be able to move forward with. I am not in favor of combining any of our schools. The alumni for JFK made it very clear they were not in favor of combining any of our schools. The alumni for Forest Glen was very clear that they were not in favor of combining any of our schools. If that's not what the community want and the alumni wants, we can't make decisions just to save a dollar. We need to be able to make those decisions to be able to support the school community. So I do have a couple of ideas on how we can solve this issue. And I've already presented some of those to the city manager. And he's gonna have some conversations with his team. And he and I are gonna be working lockstep because I wanna be able to eliminate any narrative that he and I did not know about the shortfall. But the inflation jumped tremendously in the last eighteen months. This is part of the reason why Mr. Harris provided you all with information and articles on how the cost of school construction is a major issue. Fifty percent of the schools in America are over fifty years old. We have seven of them that are in that same position right now. And that just so happens to be the same schools that we're trying to replace. Suffolk Public Schools will not renovate buildings, that is a waste of your money. It's not fiscally responsible. We will not renovate schools. I agree with the mayor about the expansion to Nazman River High School. But we also have had Ms. Forstman's team to go in and take a look at the actual rooms themselves so that we can see if every room is being used to the best of its ability. And it wasn't. So we're buying some time there. And that's also part of the reason, as Dr. Brooks Buck said, why we opened up the Center for Performing Production Arts, hopefully to be able to steer some of the kids from Nazman River to attend Lakeland High School. Kings Fork High School is our largest school. We're at seventeen hundred. Nazman River's at sixteen eighty-six. Our next largest school, as Mr. Riddick stated, was Kings Fork Middle School. Kings Fork Middle School is larger than Lakeland High School. So we need to continue to watch that, especially with some of the developments that are occurring within the central part of our city. Before I turn it over to Mr. Moore, I'm gonna call Mr. Harris up. If you can answer the questions that Ms. Butler Barlow had, and Mr. Rector had about the cost differences and having CSEP and the data center being, uh, separate buildings. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, Mayor Dooman, Chairman Riddick, members of the board and council. Um, we, we did look at, uh, we considered, um, including CSEP and the data center within the footprint of the middle school building. However, there was an interest in using the middle school from Cherry as a prototype. So one of the things we wanted to do was try and keep fees to a minimum, uh, keep them as low as possible. And by utilizing that middle school design again, that's one, one of the ways we were able to help do that. So then we looked at the two separate facilities of CSEP and data center as separate independent buildings. Uh, as Dr. Gordon mentioned, um, the concerns with the CSEP facility as well as the data center, uh, with people coming in through, in that part of the building, uh, throughout the day. Another deciding factor to separate the data center is because it's a much smaller facility. Um, if it was tied to the middle school building, which is gonna take much longer to construct, then being able to get into that data center and operate it separately would be an issue. It would be held up by the construction, completion of the middle school. So if it's within that building, it would probably be tied to the electrical system in some fashion, mechanical system in some fashion. So having the ability to turn that data center over sooner so that you can make that switch uh, much sooner than the middle school being complete was a deciding factor for that.
And you, Mr. Harris, will I turn it over to you?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Um, a couple items I wanna address. I will call Tealyn to the, uh, microphone a little bit to talk about our bonds and our capacity again. Along with that, we have Kyle Box of Davenport, where I would like him to talk a little bit about our bonding capacity. So we can clear the air on what we can afford. Uh, as it relates to, um, Mr. Rector's question, I think, or Councilman Rector and Councilman Johnson's question on the study on how growth was looked at, the consultants worked with our development staff. And as it look at the zones, the current zones their schools had and what growth was gonna occur or anticipated within those school zones. It didn't look at anything that dealt with redistricting or rezoning a school district. It just concentrated. So when you look at the numbers, uh, of course you had five fifty-one two years ago when we sat in here. That was current and projection to go down. Uh, today we have, my numbers were five forty-one. I, I'm assuming that's close, but it's still generally the same as it was. Now, new growth, as we look at new growth, where it would be as you look at the district? New growth, where could it occur? Um, it all depends on how we, uh, work with our comp plan also. Do we expand the urban, suburban two areas and blend them together? If we do that, that might have an impact on JFK's, uh, new growth within student growth. Uh, if we extend down White Marsh Road or Hosea Road in development, that also could have, uh, impact. But again, uh, will it have substantial impact? And that's something we, I don't have the numbers on today. But that's where your growth potential is on JFK under its current zone. So the key to it though, I just wanna catch that real quick so you understand how it was worked and who worked with who to get some of the numbers back when we met two years ago on the study. Um, with that, I'm gonna ask Tealyn to come to the microphone to talk again, and Kyle too, I guess, to talk a little bit, number one, about the grants and loans so we can talk about them distinctly. We tend to blend those in on the dimes and dates here tonight. So I wanna make sure everyone has a clear understanding on that. And also on our capacity and how, how much we can borrow. And though we're growing, if we borrow more, what impacts that may be to us.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. First of all, um, on the grant program, there's not all information on the, on that state grant has come out yet. We don't know when the deadline is gonna be. We don't, they have not opened up the application process for that. Um, and we really don't know, and, and I see, uh, Dr. Gordon nodding. Um, we really don't know on that as far as when that is going to come available. And I believe someone mentioned earlier, correspondingly, we, we don't know if we got awarded it, what the timeframe is on receiving that funding. Um, preliminary information that has come out says that that grant application has come through the schools. Um, the loan, however, is a joint effort between the schools and the, between the school board and the city. And that's why you both have to have approving resolutions, um, as quickly as we can get those done on the loan program. As far as the capacity issues, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna set this up and, and Kyle's gonna come up here and give you a little bit more information. Um, it's really kind of easy to say, we'll just issue more debt. But that's a much more complex, um, issue than, than the words make it seem like it. We have, we, we keep talking about capacity, but we also have to talk about affordability. Um, capacity is one thing. Our capacity is how much debt can we reasonably issue and stay within our policies? Stay within our triple A ratings? And how much of a debt burden can the city take on? That's, that right now in the environment that we are in is not really a problem that this city is facing. The issue that we're facing at this point in time, due to, as has been mentioned, inflation, is really the affordability factor. Um, any new debt that we issue, there's an affordability issue down the road. We issue this debt for twenty years. It means that we have to plan for the next twenty years to make that debt payment. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen in twenty years. I don't know what's gonna happen in five years. Um, but certainly we are very conservative when it comes to the affordability of our debt because we want to make sure that we continue to be able to pay that debt. Um, I know there's been a lot said about, uh, impacts on operating budgets as it relates to doing option A versus option B and what those impacts are. But I can tell you right now with the CIP, the way that it looks as issuing thirty million dollars of debt every year for the next five years, of debt every year for the next five years, by the end of 2028, the city has to come up with an additional $5.8 million to cover the debt service. That's just for the 30 million. Anything we add on top of the 30 million increases the amount that we have to come up with from an affordability standpoint. To put that into terms that is a little bit easier to understand, $5.8 million equates to about five cents on the real estate tax rate. So that's our main concern when it comes to adding any costs to the CIP at this point in time is the affordability issues. What I will also say is, and again, much has been talked about as it relates to this 20 million, $21 million gap we have on JFK. And one solution that I heard was to push it out another year. Pushing it out another year puts that additional $21 million into fiscal year '26, '27. And as you can see, we don't have the capacity there either. So we're really faced with a hurdle as it relates to the affordability of the debt. And as has been stated, and I agree completely with, this gap is coming because of inflation. This project is not the only project the city is going to have to come up with a gap, with money to fill the gap because of inflation. We have several projects, the library, fire stations, fire trucks, parks and recs facilities, and those types of facilities that we are also going to have to face incredible inflation as it comes to being able to afford these projects and the CIP. And even, even those projects, the money in the CIP, most likely when it comes down to it, won't cover it. So there's a lot of issues at play. There's a lot of moving pieces at play. With that, I'm going to invite Kyle Laux up here, who is our financial advisor, who does help advise me and the city manager on that debt capacity number to have, to give you further information.
Thank you, Teal, and good afternoon, Mayor, school board members, chair, members of city councils. Nice to see everybody as always. I think I'll start maybe by answering a specific question or two that Councilman Rector had as it relates to the literary loan program and why we would be applying to that. You'd asked a question of, is that in some way better than the, call it, regular market for municipal bonds? And part of the reason that we're applying to that right now is we do see that as being better than the current market in two different ways. So if we were to be awarded those funds, which is Ms. Hanson mentioned, that is the loan component of the state funding. It's not the grant component. It's the loan component. That would be to 3% interest rate. So rates, as you've probably seen in the news and the markets, have moved up a fair amount over the course of the last year. And so while they're still favorable, and we as a city are able to borrow at AAA credit ratings, we'll talk about that in a second, the literary loan program provides us with an ability to have, if the state awards us funds, a known 3% fixed interest rate. The other area where that program is advantageous, even more so than what we're able to do on our own, is it's prepayable anytime with no penalty. And so from a future flexibility standpoint, as we think about managing the city's overall capital program and debt profile, that's another advantage in terms of both the interest rate and the prepayment flexibility. I think to Ms. Hanson's comments earlier, again, just to echo those, because these are unusual times in that way. We've had the good fortune of being the city's financial advisor for probably going on 15 years at this point. So we've got the track record of when, back in the '07, '08 time period, the city was not in as nearly good a shape as it is right now. We have the benefit of three AAA credit ratings. That allows us to go out and borrow for school projects and other city projects at the lowest possible cost of funds. What's interesting about this time period clearly is the unprecedented inflation. You're seeing that, everyone is seeing that. And to echo Ms. Hanson, that's going to impact not just school projects, but other city priorities that need to be taken on over the next five or so fiscal years. I think on top of that, where we are right now is in a situation, we're coming out of a very, very strong economic time period. We've seen that in terms of the amount of money the state has and these different programs. And the continuation of that any given time is uncertain. So I think it all comes back to the cash flows, the planning, and the affordability side. Ms. Hanson did mention very accurately that there's two concepts here that are very important to the rating agencies. One is that capacity, which is being able to demonstrate in a methodical, year-over-year way that we're able to maintain compliance with our debt policies and maintain levels of debt that are appropriate for a AAA rated local government, not just in Virginia, but nationally. That's part of what the rating agencies do. They're comparing us not just to our neighbors here in Virginia, but to other AAA's across the country. And so that's the capacity portion of it. And we would also agree that in that respect, the city is in good shape relative to its capacity. We've had a lot of tax-based growth, et cetera. What we see going forward though is the affordability side. And I think I've heard multiple council members, the mayor, et cetera, mentioned the, the planning side of things and the methodical way the city is in the past. Gone about understanding and planning what is affordable within the budget. And that really is the biggest piece of the pie as we see it right now in terms of how is it that the dollars are going to be allocated within the city's budget? Right or wrong, we saw the news on Friday whereby the state through apparently a clerical, you know, mistake, has sort of had a mishap with the dollars ascending to you as a local government. That's going to impact your operating budget. We realize that. Right or wrong, the city council ends up being the deep pocket behind all of that. So part of our, our goal and our task here is to understand, you know, in a holistic way, how do we responsibly afford this within the bounds of what city council is able to and willing to authorize in terms of the revenue streams? Inflation is impacting not only the capital side, but the operational side. And so I think getting back to, and some of the school board members and city council members mentioned the planning and the process, we think that's really critical here. We have a uncertain time period. We've certainly had unprecedented times the last several years. And so in that adjustment phase, studying in a very concerted manner, what are the dollars that are available within the operating budget? And ultimately, what is city council willing and able to do in terms of those tax revenues? We've worked for years and years to minimize that, but just for perspective, that $21 million or thereabouts, if indeed that's the overage, that's the equivalent thereof of about a penny and a half on the real estate tax rate. So Ms. Hanson mentioned that the existing CIP is probably five plus pennies in terms of debt service. That $21 million equates to probably an incremental additional penny. So those are difficult discussions. We understand that. But we just wanted to maybe provide that in terms of, of a little bit of color in the short run, understanding there's going to need to be a concerted series of discussions and planning effort behind that. Anything else, Mr. Moore, you'd like to?
No, Kyle, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Counsel, but with anything you would like to ask Kyle?
Kyle?
Kyle? In particular? Anyone have any questions from Kyle in particular? If not, we're going to have time to go back around for general comments.
Thank you for coming up and giving us that information. And Teal, and also, you know, we've been asked, what would it take for us to bump up that debt threshold we are on at 30 million to like 45 million? And I think you, I think you kind of framed it up just a few minutes ago. Is the affordability the debt? Do we have to pay percentage on the money? And I would just say that if we were to move any at all in that direction, going back to affordability, as Hanson said, and in all the percentages involved, we would strongly jeopardize our bond rating that would put us in a position that our debt would be much different in the long run. That may not be as attainable as people think, and throwing that rate, debt rate up just is not a magical number you stick and see if it hits the wall and holes. You can't, we can't get there if we don't have the tax base coming in or the, you know, revenues coming in to support anything. We're in a good spot right now, but thinking about all this discussion here, most of these schools that we're dealing with, this has been an ongoing project and issue way before any one of us ever came on council. These schools are, were aged. We inherited some of these schools from the Nassimah County as much as we did the city in '74 when we merged. And we would never, we have never worked financially, you hit it. We were in a position financially, we were in bad shape back in the early days. They had problems in the early days with finances. We've built to where we're at today because we've had the luxury of, of a commercial, you know, buildings coming in, homes, revenue streams, new developments in an industry. If we didn't have that, we would be in a worse condition we are right now. So, you know, I've heard, well, you know, bring it up, see if we can bump it up past the 30. After hearing what Ms. Hanson said, in many budgets as I've sat on, and we pounded this in the ground, we have to stay within that physical constraint. We have to be there in order to function as a city, or we're going to get crushed. So, you know, unless somebody can convince me that, okay, you're good to slide it up, I'm not putting my name on it because I'm afraid of what the effects will be long range. It may be worse than the $21 million shortfall for a school in the long run. So that's a big gap to make up. What goes aside to make that gap up? I don't know. But I just wanted to say to you, thank you for clarifying the fact of why we're, where we're at in the debt, as Ms. Hanson said as well. You know, Davenport, I've listened to you very well, the Davenport folks, over the last 11 years. And we've been spot on every time. And I think it would be very difficult to move that dial any kind of way at this stage of the game, specifically because we don't know what the economy is doing. It's kind of flip flopping a little bit as we go. So we got to take into consideration, there could be some shortfalls coming to us. But I just, I wanted to say that to you because you really clarified in my mind, and everybody ought to be clear up here, what that 30 million means and why we're there and why we probably couldn't go any further.
Thank you, council. And again, just, just to reiterate, I think, and we're having discussions with the rating agencies now with other clients, et cetera, and they're starting to already ask, what is your plan for recession? That doesn't mean that anybody knows it's coming. We certainly don't. There's no crystal ball, but it's that sort of planning process to understand where is your flexibility within the budget? And to the extent you wanted to, as a council bumped that debt limit up, what is the revenue stream that will pay for that? That's really the, kind of at the, at the crux of it, which isn't for us to say per se, but we can help, you know, quantify and think about those things.
Kyle, I think Chairman Riddick has a question for you.
Yes, sir. My question is a short one. I'll shoot straight to the point. Would you suggest that it would be in the city as well as Suffolk City School Board's best interest to move forward and build joint facilities versus operating them independently of each other?
I appreciate the question. I'm not, not in a position to answer, meaning that's going to be more within the range of the, the operational side of things, the studies, et cetera.
Okay, so because you're the money end of it, I'm going to give context as to why my question is what it was. We're talking about, we can't build, I'm just paraphrasing in my own words, so please forgive me if it doesn't come out as well polished as some of you would like, but if we can't build JFK at the price point because we have other city projects going on such as building of a library, the possibility of building recreation centers, the possibility of other things. A library is encompassed within a school. So are gyms and athletic fields. There have been prototypes such as Broad Creek and Norfolk where there's a joint use library. So I believe that there's some way where we could possibly do some cost saving, but I believe the both, the governing bodies are going to have to sit down as partners and come up with a uniform plan as to how we're going to grow together and get away from the relationships of parents and children where the board come and asks, Father, Mother, may I have? And we go from there. And then the parent side, no, it's not wise. We really have to put together a strategic plan. I understand CIP, but we really have to put together a strategic plan that will save money. And the reason why I brought it up is because I did hear one of you reference the financial components, that the other capital improvements plans, I think it was the young lady, I can't remember your name, who referenced the other project. So I just wanted to see, would you consider that as the best way for us to save taxpayers' money, but still move forward with what we're asking?
Yeah. And I think to the, to the chairman, while we're not experts in the, in the facilities or how you operate a school, et cetera, et cetera, I think what I, what I would say there is in terms of the financial component, however that comes together, as long as we can demonstrate to the rating agencies collectively as a city, and sort of speaking to the entire group, that we have fiscally sustainable, structurally balanced budgets and their recurring revenue streams. And so whether it's consolidated schools or not consolidated schools, making sure there's no, you know, call it pie in the sky kind of assumptions within that, that's, that's the critical component to it, at least from our perspective.
Okay. I mean, just a short comment in response to the chairman is obviously anything we could do collectively in the way of joint facilities, but there are far and few between, probably. The use of schools for recreational activities would be superb. I'm not sure we're doing that to the maximum we should now, but tie that into some city programs, anything we can do that would help us reduce our operating budget to some extent and provide a higher level of services for our citizens. But the bottom line is, yeah, this is kind of a, you know, I don't want to use the same analogy, but the reality of it is we're the ones that are responsible for raising taxes. So that's on our shoulders. The reality of it is we pay the bills on everything that gets built, be it a school or be it a city building. You know, we're responsible for the debt service. That debt service is not in your budget, it's in our budget because we pay the bill. So to your point, I understand exactly what you're saying. I would love to be able to, you know, combine resources anytime we can so we can get a little bit more bang for the buck for what we spend. But mostly what the city spends is outside, you know, you're not going to help the police stations or fire stations or buying fire engines or fixing roads and the majority of the expenses that we do have within the city. Mr. Manager, do you have a comment?
Yes, just to close out here from my end, I want to, first of all, thank council, members of the board. That last sheet was designed to spark conversation, and it certainly did. The key to it is, you know, we've heard, you know, what's your desires, or majority of the desires are on size and those elements. My, my job, similar to Dr. Gordon's and the board, is to bring you my best recommendations to council with my staff and myself combined. There's needs across the city, which you've all pointed out. We've just talked about our affordability and our capacity. So we have to make and give some in some areas if we, it's our goal to move JFK forward. There's nothing on the city side or from staff side trying to hold this up other than we need to get across this hurdle. So with that said, we have to look at the CIP and determine what can, what we, what can't go forward as we finish up JFK. And there's going to be some hard decisions there. I still think we have some time on that to the next CIP, but, you know, we have to look in and make up potentially, if we use a 9.7 from the admin, which Superintendent and I have discussed several times. The other question is, is where is the other 12 or 11? Maybe not that much, but it had contingency built into the estimate as you saw. But where can we come up with the other 10 or 11 million of deferred projects? And that not, that may not be very acceptable to some folks, but we're going to have to bring a recommendation back to you. So I just, you know, I don't want to, I'll just close it out with that, but I do want to, myself and staff appreciates the time today.
Okay. Just wrap it up and start with Chairman Riddick. Maybe go this way, it has some very brief comments. If you want to make a comment, just to wrap up the evening. Chairman Riddick? Chairman Riddick.
I will start my comments with a request. I request that we have another joint meeting in Mar- in March or April. Because waiting this long to have these conversations, then to come here and be limited to five minutes, and a, and a recap of comments, it's not as effective as we could be. But I do wanna share some information. After careful review of the City of Suffolk's Pipeline Development Plan Report, the city is growing, and in the JFK district alone, there are over four hundred homes approved for pipeline development. In the Kingsfork district alone, there are over one thousand three hundred and forty-four approved homes for pipeline development. Until we, and I know financially, we don't have the authority to tax, or to generate income from the citizens as a whole, as the city do, until we put the antics aside and come together to formulate a realistic plan on how we're going to replace these seven schools, especially JFK, we're gonna always be behind the eight ball, and we're always gonna be a date, years late in dollars, millions of dollars short. So I believe that we, as two governing bodies, should come together more and more, until we can hammer down a solid plan. I do thank the city manager and his staff, Dr. Gordon, his wonderful staff, for presenting the data, and I look forward to us getting together again, so we can continue having these conversations without such a span of time in between. Thank you.
Board Member Howe?
Um, reflecting on everything that I've heard tonight, especially what Councilman Fawcett just said, how terrible shape Suffolk, Nansman County, et cetera, was in many years ago, I don't wanna end up back there. And I appreciate the, the bond rating that we have, and, and all that's being put in place now to protect that, but I would ask that everyone consider, as the city grows, and homes are built, and other facilities are built, like Amazon and such, that are bringing children with them. And there's gonna come a point where people stop moving to Suffolk, because the schools aren't growing with the other facilities. And that doesn't solve the JFK thing now, and that's an immediate need, but as we plan together down the road, the growth that the city plans for neighborhoods and other facilities has to factor in the burden that we absorb from that. Because then there's going to be a wall eventually, where people stop moving here, because the schools don't keep up with all the other pretty shiny things that we have. And, and so, I'm committed to partaking in this conversation in a way I never have before, I certainly don't have the answers, but I now more than ever see the need for us to get this worked out in a timely fashion, and not always be playing catch-up, as Mr. Riddick said.
Councilman Fawcett.
Boy, there's been a mouthful of stuff said tonight, and I appreciate everybody and their comments, and it just seems like we turn one corner and we hit another roadblock. Every time we turn a corner, we hit a roadblock. And there's no magical way to fix everything right now, it just isn't gonna be realistic to happen. I wish we'd have never done that study, Mr. Mayor, because we might as well take that thing and throw it in the trash, because we haven't done not one thing to go along with that study that we're doing today. Nothing. So that's four hundred thousand dollars we threw in the trash can, as far as I'm concerned. And I, I wish I wasn't a part of that, at the time that was asked to be done, which the city paid for, I believe, correct? So, you know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that, I wish we could do the things that we all wanna do, in the many schools that are gonna need to be replaced over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, but, I mean, realistically, anybody here got an appetite to raise the tax rate by ten cents to make up the twenty-one million dollar shortfall? Any council member on here wanna take that and put it in your throat? I think you'd have more problems than you think, 'cause not everybody buys in to, yeah, take the twenty-one million and put it in schools. Just, they don't buy in, 'cause not everybody has a child in school, which, that doesn't mean anything, they should still be looking to educate their future children in the city. The other thing I wanted to get on, since I have the opportunity, and I have a stand here in front of the school board, as well as the superintendent, the city manager, I have asked, and I'm gonna back the clock up, when I met with your school board back when we did the two new schools on the north end, the question came up in my discussion sitting down, what are you gonna do with the old Driver Elementary? And at that time, that school super, um, school board chair, along with one of his school board members, said, "We're gonna turn that back over to you as soon as we get those two schools built." And I said, "Okay, I'm, I'm good with it." I've been sitting up here eleven years. I have asked this board repeatedly, and some of these members are not on here now, that are new members of the school board. I'm asking on the behalf of my constituents, and all of you are listening, and I applaud and want you to hit every school board member, and every council member, and the city manager, and the superintendent of this school system, to apply good sense to take that old Driver Elementary school off of the table. Get it off the table, give it to us, let's get it knocked down, get it out of the way. It is a bad, bad representation of the school system, as well as this council. It's boarded up, it's a rat hole. Their kids are gone and broke in there, and smashed every sports case in there, every piece of glass they could do. I toured that school, I got photos of that school. And my constituents are asking me, "Let's get rid of it." And all I hear from the school side is, "Oh, we need that for storage." Well, the storage I saw in that school, the time I went in there, on two occasions, one was when they had the open house trying to sell some of the furniture, it turned into a debacle, it jammed up the north end. There's gotta be a way to take it off the map. We have a little league field behind it. And I know that Ms. Howe has heard from somebody over there, in that driver area, from the HOAs, that have asked, "When are we gonna get something done with that sore eye that's sitting out there?" I am sick and tired of hearing it, I'm sick and tired of looking at it, we're costing it, we got power in that building, we got supposedly climate control in that building, and we gotta board it up, and we have a nice little league field behind it, and every parent that comes out there that I have contact with, comes up to me and says, "When are you gonna take that piece of junk off? They put graffiti on it, you have to go out there and fix it, because they put stuff that you don't want to read on that building? Let's get together, you wanna get together on all this other stuff, but that's a back-shelfed thing that you could take off the table." I don't care if it saves you X number of dollars per year, it's what you will not have to afford to keep there. And you can't tell me we can't find a little bit of stuff that you put in there, 'cause I would lay say, let's, in the next week, the school superintendent, and the school chair, and the assistant chair, I want it open to my council members to tour that building. I wanna see it, again, to match up what I've already seen. And I welcome the opportunity to go back in there. I'd like to invite some of my constituents around there to come to that school and look at it. We're never gonna use it, we're never gonna pay fourteen, fifteen, twenty million dollars to put something in there, we've been down that road already, we're not going there. Ask the school system, the school board, all of you on here, to give me that school back, get it on the ground, save your bucks, and let's put that property out there, and get rid of the rat trap that's out there right now. And keep kids from breaking in it, using it, to smoke dope in, and, and do other things in there that is probably not pleasant. And we break in, we go back, we board it up. So, I'm asking today, I'm taking this audience today, and I had this planned, I love all the other stuff we've done, but this is a top issue in my borough, and needs to be Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Board Member Jenkins?
Thank you. In closing, I just wanna thank you all for the invite from city council, and just like our chair said, we need to go ahead and schedule more meetings more frequently, and stick to the date, so we can get a solution to the issues that we've discussed on this evening. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bennet?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I totally agree that, I think we need better communication and working together to try to solve some of these problems. I would like to see the city manager and Mr. Dr. Gordon come up and work together, to come up with a good solution, to bring back to the council and to the school board, and some way that we can work toward getting this project funded, and move forward with it. I know we do have quite a bit of joint, uh, schools that we are using with the city, uh, parks and rec, so we are using some of the schools that, not all of them, there are some that are being jointly used, so I have no problem with using buildings that's not being used jointly, where we can use them when they're not in, in school. I, I totally agree that, I think if we can meet two or three times a year, better than one, and I've always said, at budget time, I don't think we should meet at the budget, I think we need to meet during the preparation of the budget, so everybody will know what is being put in the budget to be presented. So, I think we should meet more proactive during this, instead of reactive. So I do appreciate everyone's comment this afternoon, and I hope we can move forward with trying to get, working together, and get some of this done. Thank you.
Board Member Slingloff?
Thank you. I'm grateful for everyone that is here, coming together to collaborate on this discussion. One of the things, you know, a lot of this information was new to me as of today, so my wheels are spinning as I've heard the dialogue tonight. One of the things that is resonating in my mind is the, the idea, I understand that we need to balance a budget and live within a means, and that's very clear, and should be clear to all of us from our daily life, and so I understand and respect that as a city, the, the roles of the city and the roles of the school system, to live within those parameters. One of the things that stands out to me, though, in this discussion, I don't wanna lose sight as we talk dollars and cents and expenditures, that our children are not just expenditures, and our school system is not just an expenditure, but it is also an investment. Coming off of a campaign trail very recently, I did not come across any constituents who told me that the reason why they chose to move to Suffolk was for the parks or recreation. Not that those things aren't appreciated, and not that they aren't valuable, but what I heard was people making decisions as they moved into Suffolk, by looking at the school system, and the quality of the schools that were presented to the, to the constituents, to the citizens of the city. And so, we know that when you build schools, and you have options of resources within the school systems, that is directly impacting the children, then it draws the parents, and it's, it's a lure and an enticement for people to move into our city, and not only to move into our city, to put, but to put our kids in this public school system, versus other options, which people are frequently looking at in Suffolk. So in order to appeal to a broader sect of citizens, I think it's important that we do prioritize our schools as an investment, so that we appeal to citizens, and with those children come parents who are tax-paying citizens, and that increases the revenue within the city as well. So I just want to make sure that we remember the end goal, and who is on the other end of this, it's not just a dollar or a cent.
Councilperson Bubba Barley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of closing thoughts. We have a lot of expenses that, as a council, we have to cover in the City of Suffolk. We have infrastructure considerations, we have public safety, we have schools, just to name some of the top ones. And I think that we need to take a really hard look, I get accused of being anti-growth, and I'm not anti-growth, but if the revenues from the growth that we're allowing are not covering the cost of the services that we need to provide, we've got to take a hard look at, at what we're doing, and how we're, how we're allowing growth, and the speed of the growth. Because if we are constantly, as the chair, chairman said, if we are constantly playing catch-up, we're just gonna get farther and farther behind. So I think we just need to take a really hard look at, what are the revenues from the growth that we're allowing, and are those revenues equal to the cost of the services that are required? And with that, I would like to say I look forward to the next meeting between the council and the school board, and hope that it is sooner rather than later, because I think this is very, very valuable conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rector?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I will also be brief, and I just wanna touch on a couple of things, and kinda echo some of your thoughts going back to this study. One of the reasons that this study was done, and I'm gonna draw back on my time on the Planning Commission, is that when the city and the staff consider rezoning application, they have to look at the impact on adequate public facilities. And of course, one of the biggest impacts on the adequate public facilities is the impact that a new development has on schools. So studies like this were done, and there was a companion study, I believe it's a little bit later than this, that was done, that was presented to the Planning Commission, that talked about the student generation rates for the different kind of houses that are built within the city, and what impact they have on both the elementary, the middle school, and the high school level. So even, you know, going back to Chairman Riddick's comment, that there are four hundred and some houses already in the pipeline for the Kennedy School District, if you go back and look at the school, at the student generation rates that those charts came up with, it, it's still hard to justify going up to eight hundred students, just based purely on what the projected growth is. But, but having said that, and I, I will go back to, and, and end this with, you know, what my mother always used to say, and that is, where there's a will, there's a way. We can get this done, and we can get something accomplished that everybody in the city is gonna be proud of, and we can look back on and, and, and say, you know, we were presented with a significant hurdle, but we got over it by working together. So with that, I'll end. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to first thank mayor, school board superintendent, chairman, city manager, school board members, and council members for coming together tonight, and having a dialogue, open dialogue, concerning the budget, John F. Kennedy, and, and the other things that we discussed. However, I would like to, again, see the school board superintendent, and our city manager and staff work closely together, and find, again, some other ways, some other type of revenues that we can get John F. Kennedy completed. And I would like to just also say that I would love to see us get together more often, I think it's needed. And with today's climate, and the way things are now, our next meeting, I would like to have a discussion about our students and faculty as it relates to security in our schools. With that, thank you.
Board Member Breanahan?
I too echo my colleague, Ms. Slingloff, in saying that this has been an eye-opening meeting for me as well. Some of this information is brand-new, and so, sitting here trying to process through this information, definitely agree, we need to have more meetings. We need to have more meetings jointly. I think there is profit in that. I think that if we are like-minded in our end goals, and we're working together, we are all pulling in the same direction, you know, we can accomplish things much quicker. And one of the things that I did in- One of the things that I did in preparing for this meeting was reading the facility study. And just trying to understand why that much money was spent to do that study and very little of it seems to have been gleaned. And I'd like to, as a school board, you know, revisit this facility study and look at it and see what is, what's in it that would be useful and profitable for us as well. In looking at the data, and the data doesn't lie, I can tell you that as a researcher, the data doesn't lie. Looking at the projections that are coming out of that study, I echo what Chairman Riddick and Vice Chair Howell said about the pipeline study. The city of Suffolk is growing. Mostly, it has been growing in the northern end, but I can tell you on my side, I've seen a substantial boom. There are condos going up left and right, it appears. And I know that this is probably ten years in the making, if I understand correctly, those buildings did not come up overnight, those were planned. But in planning for those buildings, we also need to plan for where are we going to put all those children? Because right now, the projection for all of that new growth, not anything that we would be investing in in the future, or anything that the city council's gonna approve to move forward, but looking at what we have right now, by 2024, we're gonna be over capacity in many of our schools. And in my borough, that's three of my four schools, I'm looking at being a hundred and four percent over capacity, a hundred and nine percent over capacity. And I just, I'm trying to understand the burden that that's gonna put on the school level for those administrators and for those teachers in the classroom. Like, I can't even imagine where they're at right now. I speak to my constituents often, I have many educators and families reaching out to me about their concerns, and they talk about this issue of capacity to me. And we need to do a better job of planning that out well. And so, I don't believe that as a school system, we can do that by ourselves, and I don't believe as a city, the city can do that by themselves. We need to collaborate on this. This has gotta be something that is planned on together and worked through together, 'cause otherwise, we're at a place where we're not gonna meet the needs of these families that are coming in, and I agree with Vice Chair Howell. At some point, families are gonna make the decision that they're not gonna come to Suffolk because Suffolk schools can't meet their needs. And we are, we are a school of excellence, we are, we are working hard to be a school of excellence. And we're gonna lose that if we cannot plan better for students and families that are coming in. So, I look forward to being able to work with my city council colleagues. I think this was a great meeting. It was a tough meeting, but a lot of truth came out in this meeting, and I think that we need to look at the elephant in the room and start taking chunks out of it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson.
And just to reiterate a little bit what Ms. Brittingham just said, I think we need to meet together. You're all right, but we're not gonna accomplish in these meetings what we need to accomplish, we've got so many things to accomplish. So, what I propose we do is that the school board members, the council members from that borough, we have an open dialogue. And we talk on a regular basis and we understand what John's telling us, we understand what Al's telling us, because we talk and we are able to do it, and then we come together once every quarter or whatever we can pull together. But a big forum like this is difficult, but we've got to start talking to each other. That is the problem that I see. And we have lots to talk about, just like the school facility study report, there's so much animosity there, we really need to discuss that and find out why we haven't implemented more of it, or at least taken and changed it so that it works for us. So, but with that, I'd say, this was a wonderful meeting, thank everyone for being here. We're putting the burden right now back on Al and John, and we are gonna fix this. Mr. Rector said it best. We're gonna fix this, we're gonna make it happen somehow. So, with that, I'll say thank you.
Board Member Brooks-Buck.
You know, sometimes I think, well, I know, but history is a wonderful thing. History is a great thing, as a matter of fact, I'm a history buff. I've only been here eleven years, and we've been through, they say that if you've, if you've been teaching over thirty years, some of the same tactics that have been used have been used three times, you just put them under a different name. We asked for these meetings many years ago, and what we said was, not small meetings, but meetings with all of us together. My councilman and I came together, and we come together all the time, so this is not new. I thank you, Mayor Dooman, for inviting us to meet with you in a large group. I know that you know that I wrote you back to say thank you so much for sending me the letter, because I was still chair, for us to meet together, because this is what we ask for, for all of us to meet together, so that everyone could hear what everyone was saying, and there would be no stories to be told by anyone that might differ from what actually happened. So, thank you for that, and I encourage every council member and board member to meet and have the kind of relationship that Mr. Ward and I have. If ever he has a question about what we're doing, he talks to me, I talk to him. When I was chair and even before I was chair, Mayor Dooman and I talked, and I've told you all before, that the scenario might have been different for the public, whatever went with the news and sold papers might work differently, but he and I talked to each other. Now, I wanna say one thing about Driver, because that's been one of those things that's been a burr for everyone. We didn't wanna keep Driver, we didn't wanna keep Mount Zion, but we wound up having to keep Mount Zion, and it's not finished yet. Mount Zion closed how many years ago? Quite a few. I think you used to teach there, Ms. Howell, quite a few years ago it closed. It hasn't been fixed yet, okay? It's still not done. We did keep it for storage, and I would be one of the board members who would shout for you, I'm Baptist, we do that, if we could get it fixed and finished, Freedy Avenue. I'm not trying to hold on to, okay? If we could move all of our junk out of those old buildings and into a new finished building, we could. But as you can see from the CIP, it's still not finished. So, if we could finish with those buildings, we have no reason to hold on to them and would love to get rid of them. Those are my comments. Now, we met years ago, and I can say years now because Dr. Whitney was board chair, somebody talked about being a part of the process, because people would continue to say they didn't know what we were doing with the budget. Each of us, and I know, Vice Mayor Bennet, you, Mr. Fossett, you were councilman mayor, and you met with me, you met with your person, councilperson, with the superintendent, Dr. Whitney, and we sat down and gave input into the budget together, talked about our priorities. When we had our one-on-one budget meetings with you, our two-on-two with you, Dr. Whitney did that with our councilman and us. I'm not opposed to that, I doubt if you are opposed to that. So, if somebody wants to know what's in the budget and what our priorities are, we are very transparent, and we tried that. And if that works and that helps, I don't have a problem with it. So, there's no question about what we're asking for and why we're asking for it, because it's important that we understand and the public understands why we're asking for what we're asking for. I think that if we do that, that's a good thing. We have nothing to hide, it's important to know your history and it's important to tell it. I think this is a good thing, and I think if we go back to the schedule, because we set up a schedule, we said we were gonna do this four times a year, and we didn't just do that today, we did that several years ago. We just haven't done it. So, if that's what we're saying today, I'm all for it. Let's continue to do it. It's not a new thing. It's good to know your history, your real history, no matter whether it has flaws in it or doesn't. God bless you all and thank you for this opportunity.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Well, I wanna say God's good.
Yes, He is, all the time.
I've been on council eleven years, I've been in several of these meetings. This is the best meeting we had, this was the most emotional meeting we had, and they finally got that, the answer. In other words, what I'm saying to you, I've been saying, communicate, communicate, communicate. I've been preaching it to the city managers before our talk to the superintendent. Talk, get it done. It's all about the kids. I've been saying it ever since I've been on council. I think tonight, we finally understood what's going on. We finally listened to both sides. So, now, maybe progress will be made in getting the school built and not only John F.K., but other schools catch up. But what I'm saying, tonight is the best meeting that we had, a joint meeting. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and wrap it up. And Dr. Gordon, you didn't get your opportunity to make your final comments, so I don't wanna cut you out, but I'll go ahead and make mine and then you can finish it up for us, if that's okay, 'cause I knew the manager was in there. I wanna start with, I hadn't mentioned consolidation of the schools, it's got nothing to do with JFK and Forest Glen, that ship's left the port. So, make no mistake about it, I'll be JFK is a done deal, and that's not what I was alluding to, what I was referring to primarily is Forest Glen and Elephant's Fork. In my feeble opinion, Elephant's Fork does not need to stay in that little hole where they are. The facility study, you're looking at a forty or fifty million dollar savings down the road consolidating those two schools. Now, whether the school board chooses to go that way, that's not my call, but I wanted to make it crystal clear that when I mentioned consolidation, it was not JFK and Forest Glen. But that being said, we talk about communication, I'm looking at the time, and I'm gonna talk really fast, 'cause me, it's, the time is for me to stop talking and them to eat something, so I know better. I'm gonna go really quick, we talk about communication, yes, this is great, we have a great meeting, we had one board member that wasn't here, we allocated two hours, we had two hours and thirty-five minutes and counting, and we talked a lot, but we really didn't get to hash a lot out. You know, the education committee was reinstated around the first of the year, we had one meeting, we will have another meeting, again, next year, next year, next month, we'll try to schedule some joint meetings, but any large organization, it doesn't make any difference what it is in any legislative branch or anything else, it starts in the committees. That's where we can sit down and we're not tied into one hour, two hours, three hours, or four hours, it'll be as long as we want it to be. At the last meeting we had, we had the police chief, we had the fire chief, we had the sheriff there, we had CIP people there to talk one-on-one with representatives from the school board. So, I hope you avail yourself of the opportunity, because we will meet with or without you to talk about those same issues. So, with that being said, thank everyone for their input, we'll definitely have some more joint meetings, a quarterly joint meeting, if that's what works, then we'll try to do that also. And that's all I got. Dr. Gordon, you can go ahead and wrap it up for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like everyone else said, definitely wanna thank everyone for the opportunity for us to get together. We hope that we've been able to address all of your questions, one of the ones that I didn't address was what soft costs are as furniture, fixtures, equipment, technology, things of that nature. We do not wanna build a new school and put twenty-year-old furniture in there. So, that is something that has to be included, and that is something that the school system actually had a plan for when it came to the building of our schools. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for clearing up what you were saying about consolidating schools. Even if we looked at consolidating elementary schools, this means our elementary schools will have a capacity of one thousand, we don't wanna have a one-thousand-seat elementary school. That's against every bit of research there is, but we do know that we have to take a look at all the options. And as, you know, Ms. Howell had said to me, you know, earlier today, you know, we definitely wanna eliminate that perception that you all don't talk, and we definitely wanna eliminate the perception that the city manager, I don't talk. I mean, I text him all the time, he runs things by me, I talk to him before your meetings, I've actually talked to him during your meetings sometimes, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And I really do appreciate the relationships that I've built with all of our city council members, building one now with Mr. Rector, so that you all can get that perspective. And I hope that you all understand and know that we are always gonna do and fight for these kids. So, I am really aggressive when it comes to our children. I'm not gonna back down on that. And it's a, it's a point in time right now where I really believe that some action is going to occur. We're gonna have a plan for you soon, we're gonna move forward with JFK as if we have the money, because every day that we delay is gonna cost all of us more. So, thank you all for that, feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One final comment, thank you again for everyone for attending. There's absolutely no doubt that these two bodies have to work together, we serve the same constituents, we serve the same taxpayers. Now, I've said it before and I'll say it again, our city will reach a plateau, it will not be able to proceed any higher until our schools achieve and are be perceived as one of the best school systems in the Hampton Roads area. So, with that, I'll say, have a good evening, be safe going home, and this meeting is adjourned.